Twenty Town Planning Commission and Joint Meeting with the Twenty Town Design Review Board. Please come to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. Would you please stand should I pledge the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Didn't have Georgia. Didn't happen then.
I know. I almost missed it.
You used that little delay of time to get up.
I know.
But the records reflect the members that are present here this evening. The board members should have received the draft minutes of August 26, 2019. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Here none.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes.
I'll second.
Other discussion? All in his favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Carrie, thank you. First action on item nine is Meadowbrook, Section 5. Request for revision of Plat 5. Jim, would you lead us off on that, please?
Sure. This is the section of Booley Mill Avenue in Meadowbrook where the walkway that connects to the Meads Crossing Trail Network was going to be. This is by the three-acre wooded parcel or the three-acre wooded piece of Meads Crossing. And we had decided when we saw that O'Brien Avenue was not going to continue into Meads Crossing, we decided to end it as a T-intersection and then provide a walking path from that point over to Meads Crossing. As Meads has refined their plan, it looks like a better opportunity to make that walkway connection is by moving it from between lots 221 and 220A over a lot between Lot 220 and Lot 219. So that will better align with what Meads is working up for where their walking trail is going to end. So just moving the trail would be something we could normally entertain just as a redline change, but because there was an easement that needs to be extinguished between the first two lots and then a new walkway easement needs to be provided, it does require a plat amendment. And because it is a plat amendment, it has to go before the planning commission. Also on this amendment, you'll see Lot 219 has a new kind of angled drainage and utility easement. The developer is trying to be proactive about some drainage issues and as things, as grading was going on out here, realized that they may seek some complaints about how the water flows across the yard. So also in your packet was a redline drawing with some new contours shown for lots 219, 220, and 220A, along with the addition of a new yard inlet on Lot 219. Again, the addition of the inlet and the grading, that could be done as a redline, but because we want that new stormwater drain to be covered by a utility easement, that again requires a plat amendment. So those two things, really the easement is the reason that it's here before you because we need to amend the plat to get those easements updated. So if there are any questions, I'll be happy to do my best on them, but that's kind of it in a nutshell.
So what changes are being made to decide setbacks? Are they still within our...
We're not changing any of the lot dimensions. The only thing that may change is on Lot 219, there, the house may be pushed a little bit to, if you're looking from the street towards the right, to avoid that utility easement. But it's been modeled with the footprint of the homes that are being offered there and there shouldn't be any problem with accomplishing that on the lot.
Does anybody have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion, one way or the other, for approval.
I'm making a motion to approve the changes on Lot 219, 220, and 220A.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any comments from the floor or anyone that has anything to say about those lots? Okay. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, it's unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Twenty Town Crossing. Presentation of a preliminary site development plan. Jim, if you want to start us off, and we also want to get the Design Review Board involved in this also.
Okay. So the preliminary plan for Twenty Town Crossing was distributed last month. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to kind of page through it and it, as expected, follows the concept that we approved several months ago. And this evening, we'll hear from the developer and their architecture team with regard to some of the design standard aspects. In your packet was, this month, was a packet that shows some elevation views of the proposed buildings that coupled with the site development plan where we can see the spacing and the street rhythm, things of that nature that we need to think about for design standards. So just to sort of get us started, we do have a little bit of overlap in that the design standards do talk to some degree about the placement of buildings and the orientation of buildings relative to the street and things of that nature. They talk about the rhythm of the spacing of the buildings along the street and things like that. So there is a little overlap between what the planning commission typically looks at in terms of like building placement and what the Design Review Board can get at. Also, the Design Review Board primarily looks at aesthetics and building design, things of that nature, but when we're doing a site development plan, the planning commission also has some say in what the elevation views of the building are going to depict. So we have a little bit of overlap between the two groups, so I thought it best to just hold a joint meeting, which worked out well for tonight, so that we won't have the likelihood of one group saying A and the other group saying B without knowing, you know, what's going on with either group. So with that said, I guess I'll turn things over unless there are questions for me beforehand, but we can turn things over to the developer for the presentation if you're ready.
Later on, I might have something for the design standards. Are we using the one for 2008?
There have not been any amendments to that.
All right. So at this point in time, is a representative like to come forth?
Good evening. I'm Clark Schaefer. I'm the lawyer for the developer. We have Michael Blake here who's our architect, and I will ask Michael to step up and talk a little bit about the design of the buildings and the architectural features of the buildings and their relationship to the Old Town Design Standards. Michael, I know you did that for the BZA hearing, so can you do that again? Hold some stuff.
We brought some boards that are essentially the same. Do you have your packet?
Okay. So the first couple pages are just kind of an overview. We wanted to share with you just an aerial view that you can return to for reference. But you all know the limits of the site. It's primarily bounded by Harney Road and Baltimore Street. Two parcels divided by Westview Drive. And the surrounding context is a mixture of some single-family homes, both single and multi-story, and there's also a multi-family apartment building just adjacent to the site. Second page in your packet are some street views, just to kind of give you the context if you haven't been out there recently. So the top image on the first page there is a view looking from the corner of Harney and Baltimore at the corner portion of the site. The image below is taking a view from Westview looking back towards Baltimore Street. On your third page, a little bit deeper into our site, this is sort of the second parcel, we've got a view looking to the northeast, right at Westview. You can see an existing residence there that will be removed and be a part of our new development. And then finally, the bottom image is a little bit further up into the site, looking back along Harney Road back towards Baltimore Street. So generally, the context is open field. Next page, we want to do a little bit of a, sort of an anatomy of the surrounding structures and predominantly you'll see what we call this four-square style. Two stories with a third or an attic story component to it. It's a drawing on what is predominant in this part of Carroll County, this sort of German vernacular style. It's got, you know, some ornament, but it's not overly ornamental. But generally, where you're going to find some single-family and some duplex-style buildings. And then in the lower image on that page is the adjacent two-story multi-family apartment building. The third, the next page is a site plan to use as reference. So we've got this project developed in predominantly duplex-style residences and identified as building type B. And you'll see they're arranged along Harney Road and turning up Baltimore Street, and then there's a string of them along Westview Drive. The type C unit is essentially the same, it's just designed internally to accommodate those with mobility, for mobility accessibility. Building type D is going to be a resident community building, so that'll be a single-story structure. And then building type A is a two-story multi-family apartment building, very similar to the apartment building adjacent to the site. Next page in your packet, we've went ahead and shown elevations of all four sides of our building types. And you can see if you compare the elevations to our field survey of the adjacent structures, whereas we're not mimicking them exactly, we're really drawing heavily on the influences of the proportions, the style, the number and the arrangement and proportion of the windows. You'll see porch elements that are typified in the surrounding existing structures, and those are also reflected in our design. Materials, we're using some of the same materials you're finding in your, in the adjacent community with either stone bases or siding materials. We've got trim elements that will be painted in the same manner that the existing structures are. Another element that we're reinforcing in terms of the context is the use of the dormer elements in that third story. So you really read the proposed development as two stories with that third story in the, sort of in the attic or dormer space that is typical of some of the surrounding residential structures. And then finally, the last couple pages, we've provided some perspective views that give you a sort of a flavor of the character of the community. You'll see that the massing of the structures and the spacing and the arrangement along the street fronts are very similar to what you have in the existing community. We will be using a sort of a color palette that is consistent with structures in the area. And then the final two pages, we've sort of tried to give you a comparison, sort of drawing from existing structures and then showing sort of how the proposed design is compatible with those structures and also following the, sort of the format of your Old Town Design Standards, so you can see how we've really drawn influences from the existing context, yet following the standards as they're written and presented.
Michael, did you review the Old Town Design Standards as you were drawing?
We did. We did, and really those last two pages are sort of our, trying to illustrate those standards more clearly, representing graphically and then in a sort of written format, some of the key points of the design standards.
Anyone have any questions or comments this time? Can we go back just to that one page that gives the basic layout? Just want to confirm that the front of the houses or buildings are all facing the main street, right? All B is facing Harney Road, correct?
That's correct. That's the front porch you'll see facing Harney Road or Baltimore Street.
And then on Westview, C, and there's three Bs, they're facing Westview.
Same condition, they're facing the street.
So I just want to note that we have a community building backing to the existing homes that are there. I'm assuming one of the things in that building that's going to be happening is parties and such like that. Have you taken into consider the noise issues that are going to come from having gatherings and such like that of the whole community in that building and how they're going to affect the folks that already live there?
Sure. It is a rather modest community building in its size. That's where the management office will be located. There is a small community space that can be used for gathering, small gatherings, but it's not a sort of a large space.
Do you have a number of capacity for that building or not?
It's less than 50.
Less than 50. Okay. Any other comments?
I'll share some thoughts as far as the design standards go. To start off with, I think that this is a very good recognition of the design character in the neighborhood around the proposed community. Something that I'm noticing, I think I would like to see a little more variety in terms of the detail on the units. With the photos that you've provided in the packet of some of your, you know, existing structures that you're sort of drawing from, you might note that for those four-square homes and the more, I guess, German vernacular farmhouse type, pretty much no two homes have the same columns on the porch. There are some with round columns, some with masonry columns, some with a combination, some are sort of pier-shaped. You know, those with the four-square with the pyramidal roofs, you know, they tend to have, I guess, more mass to the columns, you know. Some details like that, I think I'd like to see a little more variety in there. And while certainly there is precedent for the shed dormers, and I'm not opposed to them, I think having a little variety, again, maybe with the dormer shape, you know, I think most of the homes that have the dormers on the third floor, if they're a simple gable roof, it tends to be more of a forward-facing gable on the dormer. And on the four-squares, it tends to be like a hip roof on the dormer. So again, just maybe a little variety to be introduced. As far as roof shape, I mean, overall, I think it's a really good package. I think, you know, the two-and-a-half story, the two, you know, massing, the fenestration all really show that some thought went into it, and I certainly appreciate that. But those are just some things that I kind of picked up on, just kind of at a detail level.
I'd kind of like mimic what Mr. White stated. Talking about the dormers on the apartment building, I feel like you nailed the dormers there, the way that they're pitched towards the center. With the yellow ones, I just don't get that. They don't seem to fit on that side of the scene. One example that you offer for a similar spot on gable, or dormer, excuse me, is on East Baltimore Street. You're more on the west side of town, we really don't see that particular spot. If you look at the yellow house on Harney Road, again, you have the kind of the pitch to the center style. And I'd like to see more of the duplexes match the dormers that are on the apartment building if possible. I think it would better match the area of curvature. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Moving off of the buildings herself, we still have some concerns of the overall site. The, at least I do. The large green area right off of Westview and Harney Road, what's the intent for that other than being just open space?
It's not owned by them.
Is that... It's not? That's not part of this?
No, on the corner of Westview and Harney?
Yeah.
That is a separate parcel, is that correct?
Yeah. So if you look at the black and white site plan, this sort of dash, dot, dash line...
Okay, I see the dash now.
Yeah. That's the boundary of the parcel. This is a separate parcel, not owned by this developer.
Well, I was leading up to, I'm still concerned about the locations of the dumpsters. A long ways to travel for those ones on the curvature of Harney Road to go all the way back here past the dog park.
Understand your question, yeah. Candidly, that is really not a long distance for most of the communities that we design. It's not as far as you might think. That's why we do have two locations, one for each side, and the travel distance is not that much further, say, on the left-hand side of the site plan for the furthest B-unit to the dumpster as it is for the B-units on Baltimore Street.
Well, it seems like you could probably fit one next to where the tot lot is. You could put something right there. That would be a spot that would be equally accessible to both of the...
Okay, well, if you look at it, we appreciate it. And even though the Board of Appeals agreed to the parking spaces, most of us still have a concern about the number of parking spaces. I don't know if there's anything you can do back here towards the dog park or wherever, but it just seems, in our opinion, it's not enough for what amount of people it's going to be there.
We can take a look at that. That one could be a tougher nut to crack than the dumpster, so, but we'll take a look at that. And we can talk, I understand your concern. They run, people that are developers to a lot of these communities, and they have a lot on the ground, a lot of those people on the ground, and they carefully look at the parking because they don't have that parking, they're not attractive for people to rent. The one, the one factor that immediately raises the concern a little is the fact that in a development like this, unlike a single-family, you know, or a multi-family development or a, they will have total control over the tenants and the parking. It won't be like your neighbor just, you know, his or her son and daughter just moved back home and they have three cars and two kids, and all of a sudden, you have six cars at that, at that single family. They'll be able to, these will be, you know, rented, and they'll have rules and regulations, and there'll be specific rules on parking. But we'll take a look at that, we understand the concern. It was a concern that the Board of Appeals also, and we put on our testimony there, so we'll take, we can take a look and see.
Is there plan on numbering the parking spots to match the apartments or just going to be parking spots?
Well, I don't, the answer I don't know, but that is a possibility. And one thing that I, that they've told me before was that they have the ability to say you can only have one vehicle or two vehicles, you know, for your unit, or how many you have when you move in. And, you know, always is interesting. Somebody at some point mentioned Westview Drive, and we're not coddling on using Westview Drive for parking.
You're going to have to use Westview Drive because you got not enough parking everywhere else.
I know. I think West, that was already determined that there's no parking in Westview Drive.
Well, you know, I've heard comments that they want, you know, some of you want Westview Drive as only one-side parking, but if you take one side or the other away, then you're not going to have enough parking because you can't control guests and you can't control people. I've been apartment rentals for 40 years, and I'm against making it one-side parking, but then I'm not against it because you got to have it.
Well, if they have control.
Where's the control?
That brings up, you know...
Well, that could be a valid decision. It is a valid decision. Obviously, we don't control that. But I hear what you're saying is that some, sometimes things develop and all of a sudden, you have these guys who can go in, and why's that got parking out there?
Well, you only got parking for 1.4 cars, you know, and these are nice houses. People's not going to have one car. These are nice houses. These are tenants that's going to want more than one car. They're definitely going to want more than one car, and they're going to want a motorcycle.
Well, it's going to be up to the management.
I know what you're saying.
It's going to be up to the management of the site to handle, I think.
Well, let's see.
Just pointed to me, my attention that on the north side, I guess the north side of Westview, when you go into the four B-units, there's a trash container, but there's space there within inside that dotted line. Is there any reason why that wasn't utilized for something?
Which one's that again?
Looking up Westview to the left. Okay, you see the trash?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, sure.
Is it the drop-off of... Is it the drop-off of...
Yeah, for this presentation, we were trying to be less technical. If, if we had the, the full engineered site plan, you'd see we're trying to accommodate stormwater management, other utilities in the site in that area. So, any large, sort of large area on site that doesn't have parking or drives or buildings on it, it's probably to accommodate stormwater management.
Okay, thanks.
I, I do have one question about the, the color schemes that we presented are, they're pretty reserved, but we did identify sort of a palette that we could choose from. Are there any thoughts about sort of variety of, you know, you talked about a variety, detailing, a variety, I mean, would that be, you know, sort of an open and well-received?
Well, hey, looking at some of the color palette that you have here, for example, the red, in that part of town, a red is a birch structure. I don't know that it would appear as well as, as, as looking at Meeks Crossing means a similar color, and that got a lot of pushback actually, because it's, it's much more bold than what you would find, especially in the design standards area. Other than that, as you look at, let me find an example that I wanted to share. I guess more or less, a lot of the colors that you have are more of a muted variety. Probably as opposed to, kind of an olive green, I'll call it, it's kind of a lighter muted olive green, probably more of a, a neutral gray, less than beige. I see the one below is kind of more beige. But neutral gray is fairly common in this district. A pale yellow as opposed to a muted yellow, which you see across the street on Harney And the, the blue, I really don't see anything, except for, again, Meeks Crossing, that would really match something like that, so I don't know if that really...
Do you think you'd be open to select variations just to provide sort of more contemporary treatment? I mean, maybe predominantly we use the colors that are, you know, seen in the area, but I'm on sort of a select, you know what I'm saying? Just trying to be, yeah, yeah.
And we're kind of, we're at two different phases there. We look at the historic design standards, and then we mentioned contemporary, and that's where we're kind of going to have a conflict. It's, we want something not necessarily that looks old, we want it to be complimentary. Can you do contemporary and be complimentary? Absolutely. How bold are the colors going to be? Even if they're muted, they could still, a dark blue may stand out like a sort of, and take away the aesthetic of that area. Does that make sense? I think there's a house, it's actually on East Baltimore Street, you have a picture of it on here. Yeah, it'll be the one, she, fifth page, you have the six examples. In the top right is on East Baltimore Street. That, of course, is kind of a, a blue-gray with a blue trim around, darker blue trim around it. That blue-gray idea might, might work out a lot better than the bold blue that you have. Really, what I think is not as applying to be red and blue and olive green.
Okay.
I'd suggest maybe putting together a, a, a color palette and perhaps the combinations of the colors that might be offered. I, I think that some of the negative comments we've heard about some of the offerings at Meads was the, the combinations of colors on, on an individual, on like each home's facade, where they, they, I guess, in an attempt to evoke the craftsman's style, they mixed clapboard with vertical siding with cedar appearance, and, and they also threw in a variety of colors. And on some of those units, the feedback I've heard is that it's too much on one unit, but maybe if we did have a broader color palette, but kind of a limit of how they might be combined on a particular unit, that might give us a little more to talk about and, and consider.
Right, I, I agree. I, I think although there is an example here of sort of a beige siding with blue trim, predominantly we would probably have a consistent trim throughout all the buildings, and then just change the color on the siding just to give it some variety.
Well, I, I think that's kind of a lack of logic that Mr. Wyprak was referring to earlier, you, you know, by having the same trim, you're going back to that kind of style. And I understand it's a lot cheaper for you guys to build these all identical, but when you go through historic Tony Town, you're hard pressed to find two houses that look, you know, identical, a little of the same. When you have, obviously, the same shape of house, the same windows, the same dormers, and you have the same trim, the only thing different is the actual color of the house, you really don't have a variety at that point. But again, I'm not saying you have to build all thirteen places to be fully individual to each other.
Right.
You need to look at things that make something stand out more than the rest.
I think that's good direction.
Excuse, excuse me, go ahead, I can't, we've got talk up. You have a question?
My question is, concerning the siding, you're using fiber cement siding. Did I hear you say, uh, uh, what I was wondering is, is there any possibility, and I'm wondering how typical, or everybody else, there are a certain varieties of, of the fiber siding. There's the shingle rock, there's the muted siding, there's the Dutch letter, there are all kinds of sidings. And you have, again, Brad said, we would want to keep it just in a cookie color, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure that, too much variation, there's a, I think, I'm a little bit of a major in siding, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but, you know, I'm wondering if maybe you have a variation for your siding. And then the other question is, are you using dimensional shingles or...
For, for the roof, shingles, yeah. They're an architectural shingle that carries a thirty-year warranty, so they're not your builder grade shingle, if that helps, yeah.
Guys have anything else?
I have nothing else, Mr. Chair.
Any comments from the floor on any of the issues? If you do, please come to the...
Now, I, I just left them when all of this is best to be done. When, once a year, you're planning on...
I think we'd like to start construction next year, if we can make a new progress.
Any other comments? Okay, at this point, we thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And you have no further questions at this point? I guess my only thing is, are you having a separate meeting and making a recommendation for us, or...
Well, I believe, based on what we've stated here, I think we're going to be expecting to see some sort of revision, is that safe to say?
Yeah, I think we'll take your comments, we'll have to look at them from a variety of different perspectives, but I think, what's the best way to then communicate back to your...
The best way to do it is to make some revisions, including, we have other comments that we've gotten, technical comments and things that we have to deal with, including those. Submit, make another submission to you, including the Design Review Board and the staff, see if we can work this out, and then come back with final approval, hopefully.
You mean preliminary, preliminary approval?
Preliminary, that preliminary approval.
Yes.
You'll continue working with Mr. Wyprak when he's received everything from you, he'll communicate with the Design Review Board. We will meet, and of course, the Chair and Councilman Fuller is also a member of the Design Review Board, so when we reconvene, we'll then submit back the planning commission and final recommendation. So just continue working with Mr. Wyprak, and he'll coordinate things on the site from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
That answers, I knew we were leaving, we, we appreciate it.
Combine the two, yeah.
Just give them a minute to... Let's see. I have to sit in the church, they leave me pretty often, you know.
Get out while you still can.
Still there, I hold six.
Finally takes off.
I think he should be on it now, because he's not appointed. I was going to bring him up to Jerry, but Jerry's not in, I do too. I'm glad you feel the same way.
Yes, absolutely. That elevator's not big enough for all of them to be in.
And then, and they didn't even say nothing.
We're going to need a bigger elevator. I was using fiberboard siding, that's just a most traditional word.
What's the time table? Like, how long does that one last compared to the vinyl? How long does fiberboard last as compared to vinyl?
Thirty years.
So it's a little longer than the vinyl?
Paint, pay it all by the company.
Okay.
Okay, Jim, let's, uh, let's continue on. I guess there's no ordinance or agreements left. I guess your report's next, Jim.
Okay. Well, we covered the first couple items on there with regard to Meadowbrook and, of course, Tony Town Crossing. So, the only other thing I wanted to bring up in, in the report this month was the Tannery Barn, we've had a lot of discussion about them over the last many, many months. They're continuing, continuing to work towards their use and occupancy. They apparently hit a, a good bit of rock in the path of their new water line, which was, as we know, required, because when all was said and done, they did end up having to sprinkle the building. That was a point of contention, or, or something that they were hoping not to have to do through the site plan process, but then as they, as the pavilion evolved and so on, the sprinklers did become necessary, and that warranted a new water line. That apparently has been quite the challenge for them to excavate for. So, they are continuing to, to work on that. I have not been out to the site lately. I understand that the curbing on the downhill slope of the driveway has been installed. I, I haven't gone out to measure it to see if it's the right length yet, but hopefully I'll manage to make my, my way out there this week and take a look at their progress.
It really looks different being white, the barn instead of red.
Yeah, it's different.
It actually, it looks pretty nice, I'm, I'm impressed. But they did have an activity there this weekend, right?
Yes, they, um, they did. They apparently had to, I did hear from the county about that, that they were seeking approval to have, have a, an event there, and the county agreed to, without, without them actually being issued a temporary UNO, they were required to have a fire watch person who has to patrol the, this, the building every thirty minutes, they had to have a door person assigned, they, and that person couldn't be the same person. So they agreed, to the best of my knowledge, they agreed to those conditions with the county, and the county okayed them to have, have the event. There wasn't actually anything that the city had to sign off on for that to happen. I, since there wasn't actually a city sign off, like, like a temporary use and occupancy would be, I did not offer any objection to it. It sounded like from a, a safety standpoint, the county had covered everything that, that needed to be addressed, so. At any rate, they are continuing on, and once they have their use and occupancy, then the clock starts on those things that we asked them to do in that public works agreement and then, as far as the, the as-built drawings, and, let's see, what else was in there? The, the, well, the, the disturbed area is going to be documented.
Stormwater management.
And I, I think it's very likely that we will see that they disturbed a good bit over five thousand by the time they did all their piecemeal changes to the plan. So I suspect that we will be requiring some kind of water quality feature to be built at the site, but until they really wrap it up and get their use and occupancy, that, that timeline doesn't start. So, last thing I had mentioned on the report was that we'd issued twelve new homes, that was the case when I wrote this, but we've done a couple more since then, including another one at Meadowbrook, so it was a busy month as far as new housing starts goes. So that's, that's about it, unless anybody has questions, I can either roll right into ongoing projects or field questions.
Anyone have any questions?
All righty, so, well, we already talked about Tony Town Crossing. Maryland Compassionate Care and Wellness, also, they, they're rebranded as Grassroots. They are moving ahead, their interior renovations are nearing completion. The, the big items left, the last time that I was at the site, they still have the, the large outdoor HVAC units to, to bring in. There's, are some questions about how they're going to maneuver those units to the rear of the site, because they're larger than the width of the access drive that's going around to facilitate construction right now. The idea of using a helicopter to carry them to the, from the front to the rear of the site was explored, but I understand that the building owner was resistant to that operation, so they may end up going to the west side of the building to, to get the tractor-trailers carrying those large outdoor units back to the, the installation, or the, the appropriate site for installation. So if that's the case, they will probably have to, and I suspect we would do this as a red line drawing, but they tell me that they can have those units delivered to the site and installed, and everything cleaned back up in two to three days. So we may look to allow them to go beyond what the current limit of disturbance is to be able to drive trucks across and deliver those units, because there's a drop-off right next to the, to the gravel construction drive that's not going to be wide enough for them to get it through on that side. So, again, that's not something that necessarily has to come back to you for approval, if, if it's something that they can do in a couple of days and just put down temporary matting for the trucks to drive on, and then pull it back up again in a couple of days. But hopefully we'll know what they plan to do over the next couple of weeks, so I'm, I'm hoping that before you meet again, those units will be installed and they'll be even that much closer to completion.
You didn't happen to hear how they got the storage trailer out?
I did not, I should have asked that. That, that is a good question.
Out of the building or off the property?
Out of the building.
They cut a hole in the back, I asked him. Yes, they had to put a hole in the back.
I didn't remember that.
Yeah, because I saw, and I said, where did my, my storage thing go? I wanted it for my Christmas decorations.
So, let's see, moving on, Meadowbrook is, is chipping away, I mean, obviously, we had that revision that we talked about tonight, but I'm, I'm glad that the developer is, is paying attention to little details like that as the grading goes on, and as the lots are, are developed lot by lot, they're, they're keeping an eye on things. And we have seen with the more intense rain events that we've been having in the last year or two, that while the stormwater management plans meet all of the state requirements and, and all of our local requirements, that we've seen instances where the rainfall just exceeds the designed capacity of these facilities. And I think that in Meadowbrook, the developer is doing a very thoughtful job of trying to address that and be mindful of that as the new sections are developed, such as the addition of another yard inlet to help get that flow out of the yards and into the storm drain system. So, but they are, they're moving along at a pretty good pace also, as far as how many units they're, they're pulling per month. They've been getting, you know... They've been getting, you know, at least one a month, but two or three is more typical for Meadowbrook and of course Meads is, you know, pulling permits more rapidly. We still have an easement issue to resolve at Creekside, the property owner where the pumping station is has some concerns about what was presented to them and I, I have not had a chance to really focus on that lately. Sheets were waiting still for their stormwater, stormwater management agreement, which was the reason that they didn't get dropped off the list years ago. And I think I had mentioned, a few months ago, they reached out to us to request that we close the escrow and, and everything and then when we looked at it, it was like, oh, that's why we didn't close it, because we never got this from them. So, we sent it again and we're still waiting for it. Evapco, I think we just need to remind them that they need to provide a letter requesting the closeout to begin. Nothing new on George's or, and we already talked about Tannery Barn and Meads Crossing. The developer has to make some small changes to landscaping, currently there's the, the sewer pumping station is very close to where the model homes are out there and there's a, an open space area to the rear of it and the landscape plan buffers the rear of the pumping station to the open space, which I certainly don't object to, but the developer is suggesting that perhaps we could find a better location for those trees or those planting units and put them someplace more visible. Although, the thought of maybe we don't need them after all has come up as well, so I, I certainly would lobby for a relocation if we do entertain any change there. But I did, did just receive a revised drawing for that today, but not in, not in time to get it through to you guys for anything, for any decision tonight, but we'll have that for, for next month if, and again, that's something that we probably could do as red lines, because it's not a substantial change to anything, but take a look at the site if you get a chance to get out there and look at the pumping station and if anybody has any comments one way or the other, please shoot me an email or give me a call. I, as I said, I don't really have any concern with moving trees that are behind it, but you know, if, if anybody has suggestions on where a better spot might be, feel free to share that, so.
We leave it Jim. I imagine within the next couple of months they'll be asking for section two to come in. Is there going to be any hangups with Angel Road? Because that was one of the things we wanted before they started phase two, was that they opened it, they're, what is that street?
Crimson.
Crimson, yeah, to Angel Road. So, is there something we need to move forward on or what's the county or what?
Well, they will, I'm sure that they will have county improvements to make when they make that connection. I don't know for sure if the county will require deceleration lane or a deceleration lane or not, but I'm sure the county will, will require certain improvements when they make that connection. I think the big issue for us, I, I know the planning commission as well as I do feel like we do need that connection to have more than two access points for a community of over three hundred homes. We all know that there is a lot of community resistance to that connection by residents along Angel Road and Deal Road, so I think we can certainly expect to have a lot of conversation about that matter when we, when we do see phase two. But as far as our role in that, we just need to ensure the developer includes it in, in phase two. So, I think that the developer is probably going to entertain comments and suggestions from the community out there while maintaining that whatever the city wants him to do, he will do, so I'm sure that will steer most of that discussion back to us. So, I, I certainly anticipate a lot of, a lot of comments on that particular aspect of it, but all we need to do is make sure that it's in, in the concept for, for phase two.
I just don't want that dropped. All we need is a train accident right there on that main entrance and that closes that whole section other than going through a whole another development to get there.
When are we doing with the clubhouse or the...
That's coming phase two correctly, the clubhouse?
And we do want the phase, we want the clubhouse in phase two and again, that's something that we need to...
Somewhere right around in there.
That we need to make sure that the developer does include that in, in the next phase. So, and with the clubhouse being slated for the area, I guess essentially across Crimson from Meads Avenue that's constructed now, you know, it's, it's practically right where the infrastructure is already installed, so it should not be a challenge in any way really to, to include that in the next phase. Perhaps, perhaps a financial challenge, but as far as engineering goes, you know, that should be an easy thing to include. And again, that's up to us to make sure that we require that in the next phase. So, and from what the developer says, that should not be an issue because they want the clubhouse to be there to help drive sales and, you know, so it should be a, a win-win if you want to call it that, something that we both want to see.
Okay, that was all I had for there. Okay, is that it then Jim?
Yep.
Okay. Yes Cody?
Good evening everyone.
Good evening.
So, just to start, the comprehensive rezoning has been an ongoing process and we finally have the Board of County Commissioners set to review the commercial industrial and employment campus districts at a public hearing this Thursday. There's two available to the public, one at 1:00 PM and one at 6:00 PM. And following that hearing, the Board of County Commissioners will again discuss this topic and take action and staff continues to work on upstates to the residential portion in conjunction with a citizen resident focus group. Just to highlight some of the changes that will be discussed at the upcoming Board of County Commissioners hearing. The definitions, so it adds, amends and deletes various definitions, just to modernize some of these descriptions, consolidate uses into general categories. The zoning districts themselves, it creates three new commercial districts and that is C1, C2 and C3 to replace two existing business districts, BNR and BG. It also renames two industrial districts from IR and IG to I1 and I2 and creates a new employment campus zoning district as well. For the uses, it replaces the format of listing all the uses under each zoning district into a nice, easy to read table, particular for land uses and eliminates the practice of pass-through uses, which is automatically permitting uses in a, in a less intense district in the more intense districts, so we'll be getting rid of that. It prohibits new dwelling in commercial districts and permits a number of industrial uses in industrial districts by right rather than needing a conditional use approval. Lastly, some various bulk requirements, it reduces certain yard requirements such as front yard, side yard, rear, but maintains all separate requirements for residential uses. And that's basically it as far as the changes of the document itself, how Tawnytown is affected, there's a few properties on the outskirts of town that are basically just getting reclassified to those new zoning names, whether it be I1 from an existing IG or a BNR changing to a B1, but no physical changes to the uses, it's all housekeeping stuff basically. So, that's it as far as the comprehensive rezoning. The staff is also working on the update for the water and sewer master plan for this fall and the bicycle pedestrian master plan will also be set to review by the planning commission this month and hopefully adopted soon after that. Is there any questions I can answer for you guys?
Jim, you have anything?
When was the bike and pedestrian set to?
Um, it's set to be reviewed later this month, so we're hoping that soon after that it will be adopted and signed into resolution.
Just couldn't keep up.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Hey, you have a business, Barry, you have anything?
No sir.
Jim, you have anything? Jim, a question. Our water allocations, based on what we have in our, our area, what term, I can't remember what term I want to use, but not, not only in our town limits, but our...
The recharge?
Recharge area. Do we have enough to cover anything that could come on document?
We don't already have?
That we don't already have on?
We have, one of the council members packets was sitting downstairs, so I grabbed that.
The only reason I bring that up because the issue with Westminster and the new school location.
We have, we, we do a water allocation revolution each month with mayor and council, they, they approve this on a monthly basis and we start out with our total available gallons per day, then we subtract out what's already been approved and allocated and we allocate typically when either, if a project has a development rights and responsibilities agreement, that may dictate when we allocate the water, otherwise it's typically allocated when they execute a public works agreement with the city, so the usual routine is, and we'll use Meadowbrook, you know, we, we approved the Platts, so we approved the Platts tonight, well, these are amended, but you know, they'll get signed, don't let me, let you walk out of here without signing these, and then recorded and the public works agreement is executed usually as, as part of that whole package.
So, Meads Crossing is all covered, right?
So, Meads Crossing is covered in, in, for phases one and one A, as is the current sections of Meadowbrook and we also included the Meads Crossing Community Center Recreation Facility in the event that they wanted to build that before they actually got phase two approved. It probably will end up going in with phase two at this point, but this was added before everything was completely final for phase one and we were thinking maybe they would want to add it in. At any rate, we subtract the things that have been approved, get a subtotal, then we subtract out everything that has preliminary plan approval, which is the rest of needs and also we've got Creek, Copperfield, section eight, you know, other, other projects that have been approved and are just waiting to, to build. So, after we subtract all that out, we end up with thirty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-five gallons per day of completely unallocated capacity. Now, when Tawnytown Crossing reaches preliminary plan approval, they will go on this list, so we'll, you know, subtract out from that thirty-five thousand gallons per day, but the, I'm not sure if they have, I think one of my comments on the preliminary plan was to add an EDU block, so I don't have it right, right there, but basically two hundred and fifty gallons a day per unit, so we'll subtract that off of thirty-five thousand, you know, this will be the next thing. Now, if we do move forward with the Sewell Farm annexation, that's when things are going to get interesting, because we, we're currently evaluating our capacity both on the wastewater side and the water side and we are most likely going to have to get recharge credit through the state or get the state to approve recharge credit in order to pump our existing wells harder. So, while the Sewells, to the best of our knowledge, have a very good well, that was kind of their, their big offer to us back when we were kind of tight on water before we developed well seventeen. While we don't really need that well, it certainly could be a good thing for the city to have a good well site that we know can be a good production well in the future. As long as we have capacity within our existing developed wells, there's no point in developing another, you know, spending another million dollars to develop a wellhouse, pumping and filtration and all that stuff we need to do, because then we have, it's, it's actually almost more of a liability then, because now we've got operation and maintenance costs to worry about, which, why would we do that if we can just pump another well that we've already built a little harder? But to do that, we're going to need recharge and this will be an exercise we have not gone through with the Department of the Environment so far. We've had some initial discussions and then we realized that with, you know, we demonstrated what we could pump out of some of the wells and we were granted an increased allocation for wells fourteen and fifteen out in Carol Vista, I'm sorry, fifteen and sixteen. And, and then with well seventeen, we've got, you know, plenty of capacity for everything in the pipeline and then some, but not enough to do another three hundred houses at the Sewell Farm. So, that will definitely be in our not-too-distant future and we're just, we're just starting to have the talks with CDM Smith and attorney Gallow and, and myself to kind of work through that. So, that, that will be a, an ongoing effort for us and, and the Sewell annexation probably will not move forward until we have a better handle on those numbers and the timeline that we're going to be facing with the Department of the Environment.
Yeah, I just didn't want to be in the same predicament.
Yep.
They're in a slightly different predicament right now, but yeah, they've made a lot of mistakes.
Yeah, well, hope somebody can learn from what they've, you know...
They've made those mistakes in their previous speech, I don't know.
Okay, I guess, you know, the other thing I have is our next meeting is October twenty-eighth. And if you folks have nothing else, then I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, signal five saying aye.
Aye.
Ooh, slow class, carry. And thank you folks.